At this time, I'd like to call the afternoon session of the February 2nd, 2016 meeting, the Stafford County Board of Supervisors to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bumpke here. Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Mr. Meldane.
Ms. Sellers.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Yevakoram.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have our quarterly presentation by Dr. Bruce Benson, our Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you Chairman Thomas, Vice Chair Sellers, members of the board, and Mr. Romanello. Appreciate the opportunity to provide the board with some updates in a number of areas this afternoon. I have a little outline going around with supporting, some supporting documentation that I'd like to share with you all. First of all, am I on? Yes, I am, okay. The school board has been looking at establishing staffing standards for the division. And while the board has not adopted them yet, I wanted the supervisors to be aware of that dialogue because this is one of the methodologies that we'll use to go after reducing class size within the division, to identify what are the desirable class sizes that we want to go after by grade level and in some areas, within content areas, and then try to figure out how it is that we would meet those expectations. So, on the first page of the attachments, I copied just one page for you to take a look at, and it's one that is probably of interest to a lot of folks within the community, and it has to do with our elementary staffing. So, in the first column, you have the grade level, and the second column, you have what the state requires that we do, and then we have what we are proposing, which again, has not been adopted by the board, and then the level that we are currently staffed at in this current fiscal year, and then a rationale as to why we would do something different. And the very last column has a gap analysis. So, you know, for example, we would need four or more teachers to close the gaps in some areas. The thing that's encouraging about this is that at the elementary level, we could, for about 23 teachers, implement these staffing standards for next year. That would be something noticeable for parents, particularly for students in grades four and five. We're actually doing pretty good at early, early elementary. So, we've established these standards as drafts for the board across all grade levels, content areas. We've looked at administrative staffing as well, and we anticipate that sometime this spring, the board will adopt the standards, and that will give us a roadmap as to where to go to improve staffing and class sizes over time. There's more than we can do in one year, but there are things that we absolutely can do in this next year that will improve class sizes in the division and will be noticeable to our, to our community. We just completed the analysis of the second year of our workplace climate survey data, and that's the next attachment that I have. We have a five-pronged strategy for recruiting and retaining folks within the division. Compensation benefits are certainly important. Recognizing folks for doing a good job and giving them an opportunity to grow professionally are also important. The fifth area for us is, how do you feel about coming to work for us? And so, we do workplace climate surveying. This is the second year that we've done it. The first year was baseline. We had a little over 2,400 folks participate. We disaggregate, disaggregate the data by school and by department. What the board is looking at here are the responses to one set of questions at the aggregate level for the division as a whole. And that makes it a little bit difficult to look at because you've got a lot of folks responding. But what we're trying to get at here is, we want to see more of the, of the blue and the green. And in each one of the year comparisons, comparing 2014 to 2015, you'll notice, although in some areas it might be small, but you'll notice that there is an increase in the number of folks that responded from, in the blue and green areas, which are the agree and strongly agree. And these are areas that we have absolute control over as supervisors. We treat people with respect, that the leadership is effective, that we facilitate communication effectively. Those are things that we have control over. And so, we're pleased with that. The real powerful information is when you break it out by school and department, and we've done that. And schools and departments are looking at what they need to do differently to improve. We had some really great success stories that we had an opportunity to sit down with a freelance star recently, and had our principals talk about what they did to greatly improve workplace climate in their schools, or maintain a very high level of workplace climate. But we, you know, that's an important part of the mix for us, so we just wanted supervisors to be, to be aware of that. Next, I want to share just a couple of things from the superintendent's funding request, which is not the school board's funding request. What I've presented to the, to the school board is my request for their consideration in the FY '17 budget. We have a lot of work to do before the school board brings their request to the supervisors, but there are a couple of things in here that are just really positive, and I wanted to point that out to you all. One is the improvement that we're making with teacher compensation. The first spreadsheet's a very busy spreadsheet, but this is what we use to calculate the differential adjustment for teacher salaries based upon the median of the market. And this is a model that we adopted in the last cycle, where the further out you are from the median of the market, based upon your years of experience, the larger adjustments you would get until we get everybody to at least the median of the market. When we started doing this, we were as much as 10% out of the median of the market previously, and you can see that we're in the 2% to 3% range if we take this recommendation that I'm making to the school board and do these adjustments to teacher salaries for, for next year. And then, if you look on the next page, these are the proposed FY '17 pay scales, and you can see the adjustments that are made based upon passing along the 1% VRS first, and then a 1% VRS, and we're looking at a 2% across the board increase for folks. So, that would take our entry teacher salary, if this holds, would take our entry teacher salary to $42,238, and our teachers would top out at 35 years at 83, 331. One more year of this approach, and I think we'll be at the median of the market across the board, and then, then the school board can decide where they might want to go with an additional target, but we're gonna, we're gonna get there if we hold the course.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Dr. Benson, what do you mean exactly by median of the market? Which market are you?
These are the nine school divisions that the board adopted as their comparison group. And so, we have some schools in Northern Virginia, we have some in, they are contiguous to us, and we have others throughout the, throughout the state.
Which is a good indicator for us, but a lot of people do the comparison with the state and national median, so how are we relative to those two targets?
We have more work to do, but we're making progress, and that's the thing, is that we're gaining ground. We're gonna hit the median of this comparison group as a, as a starting point, which will make us much more competitive. And that's, that's a challenge for us because our turnover is not, is not improving with, with teachers. And we'll talk to you all a little bit more about that when the school board brings their funding request back. But it's, it's one of those things where you, you want to establish a goal that is a stretch goal, so this is some work for us to do. It's not gonna get us all the way that we probably need to be, but we're making progress. The other area that we're, we're making some progress in is hiring additional teachers to improve class size within the division. Included in my funding request are the 20 FTEs that we added in this current fiscal year, so we're maintaining support for those, and then we're adding an additional 36 teachers, as well as some other key support positions. So, we will be well past the, that 55 teachers that we had to reduce in my first year here as we were working with, trying to balance the budget, but it'll be that and then some. In terms of the forensic audit, I just wanted to clearly communicate, we are underway. That was in process prior to the winter break. There have been two rounds of interviews, surrender of electronic documents, as well as paper documents, and five years of actual budget adjustments that have been made fiscal year 11 through, through '15. In terms of an update on the Stafford High rebuild, I have a few slides for you all there as well. Phase one, which is the building itself, the contractor's punch list is at 95%. We estimate completion in March of '16. We're finalizing all of our change orders. We expect completion there in April of '16. We are not, at this point, having any kinds of negotiations with the contractor. We are exploring options as to what we might be able to do to recoup some of the challenges that we have been dealing with regarding the construction delays. Phase two, the demolition, the hazardous material abatement is 95% complete. We're about 50% demolished. Those are kind of the big things there. We expect to have partial parking transition in April, and then finally, toward the end of April, middle, beginning of April and into June, we'll complete phase three, which is the parking and the roundabout. We are, we are scheduled to have a ribbon cutting on April 21st. We are getting ready to start a conversation and award a contract for the design of the new Annie Moncur Elementary School. The board has this on their agenda for consideration next week, Tuesday, and following that, we anticipate having an executive steering group and community forums to have input into that, into that design. We're very excited. This is an opportunity for us to look at the next generation elementary school for, for our community, and we're looking forward to working with the community and you all as we work through the design challenges. With regard to the school calendar, the weather event that we just experienced used all six of the bank days that we had for our elementary schools. Our elementary schools have the fewest number of minutes built in, extra minutes built into their, to their calendars, so if we're in the position of missing any more days, we'll be having to use the make-up days that are identified already in the calendar, the first of which would be February 15th. I'm pleased to say that the long-range forecast doesn't look to have anything threatening in it between now and February 15th, but then we also have some time in March, March 27th, and then we have May 27th, June 13th, and then June 16th and 17th. But we'll just have to wait and see what happens with the, with the weather, but we are there in terms of using the days that we have built, that we have built in. Two announcements. One is, we are trying to, to kind of rejuvenate the efforts of the Stafford Education Association. We're gonna be holding a reception on March 12th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Brookpoint High School. You all will be receiving an invitation to participate. That coincides with our Fine Arts Festival, and so we're gonna have some great artwork to look at during that time as well. And then, finally, there's an interesting event coming up in the community that I know Mr. Snellings and Ms. Romanelle have participated in previously. Stafford Hospital has a 5K race that's on April 16th, and we're trying to get as many folks on the school division side to participate as we can. We're up to 34. I would extend that invitation to you all as well. Wonderful time to be out in the community promoting a healthy, active lifestyle, and we, we support the hospital in the process. With that, I'll be happy to try and respond to any question board members may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snellings.
I am the oldest member of this board, and arguably the largest, and I participate in that race with no problem, so I challenge all of my board members, fellow board members, to be there in April for a very good cause. So, no reason you can't be there.
Mr. Chairman.
You can walk, you can crawl, anything you want to do.
I love you.
Ms. Sellers.
I have a challenge for you guys this weekend in our board comments. I think some of us will talk about it. We, as a board, went and served at the Thurman-Brisbane Homeless Shelter. You know, hard to believe that, that those of us sitting up here were able to accomplish that task and actually serve dinner, and I'd like to challenge the school board to do the same. It was a great experience giving back to the community, and so there's, there's my challenge to you.
Cook, cook and serve, okay. Let me make a note.
Yeah, shop, cook and serve.
Oh, shop, cook and, okay.
It was cook, serve, and, and get a burn too, so we really did, we really did do it. Okay. Mr. Meldane?
We all have a memorandum, memorandum from Greg Riddlemas, or has that already been addressed? I'm just curious if you are...
We're, we're going to have that on our agenda for our board meeting next week, for our board to discuss, and in the interim, we are surveying surrounding school divisions to get a sense of what they might be planning to do differently on March 1st.
And where has this big snowstorm put us as far as kids having to make up days?
I'm sorry?
Have we, are we adding, are we gonna, are we gonna have enough, have we used up all of our?
We are, we have used all six.
What do you have to do?
For the, for the elementary schools. We, we have a little more flexibility at the high school level. It's a little over eight at the high school level, but this past event has, has...
So, the obvious question is, if you were to, to take another day off, it would have to be made up somewhere else?
We would have to look probably at taking away an early closure, not necessarily adding a day, but an early closure.
And for anyone listening that doesn't know what I'm talking about, it's just the registrar has asked that the schools be closed for the presidential primary. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that one of the main concerns was the pledge that voters would be required to sign, and that has been taken off the table. That's been rescinded by the Republican Party.
Ms. Bumpke.
Thank you, Dr. Benson, for your report here. You've asked, answered a lot of questions that I was going to ask about the next phase of the construction project at Stafford High, because people have been asking me about, as well as Scott Hirons, about the roundabout and the additional fields and tennis courts that need to be constructed. And I know people did not want this to jump into the August 1 date when all the athletes and band members come back, so I appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay, that'll do it. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the VDOT quarterly report. I think you guys have been busy.
Yes.
I'd like to hear a little bit about it.
Good afternoon, all members of the board. Before I go into my quarterly update, I kind of wanted to give you all an update on how snow removal went for Snowstorm Jonas. The snowstorm started on the 22nd, which was Friday. In Stafford County alone, we had approximately 200 pieces of equipment mobilized for that snowstorm. Throughout the duration of the event, we remobilized equipment from as far as Lynchburg District to help with snow efforts in Stafford County. Some of the things that we've seen from citizen complaints or citizen concerns is that their subdivisions weren't treated in time or, or as quickly as we would like to have been there. Within 48 hours after the event had stopped, we tried to get a passable lane within these subdivisions. What we ran into was that most of the equipment that we had for this event, that we usually, that we have in subdivisions, are smaller trucks, which are 4x4s. On Friday, we did a great job of keeping up in these subdivisions as far as with the 4x4s. Saturday came, and we just got pelted with snow. So, it required us to have larger equipment in the area that we had to move around to get into these subdivisions. But before we were able to move that heavy equipment into the subdivisions, we had to clear the interstate and the primary and the high-volume secondaries. There was also some misconceptions or some, some information that was out there on a public website about the VDOT snowplow tracker. The Fredericksburg District is in a pilot program for the snowplow tracker, so we don't have the same equipment that Northern Virginia uses, which is an AVL system. And Northern Virginia has all of their contracts equipped with this equipment. The contractor actually pays for the equipment, and it's monitored through our system. And Fredericksburg, we had to buy 257 iPhones. Those 257 iPhones were distributed throughout Caroline County, Spotsylvania County, and Stafford County. So, when citizens were looking at the map, they were only getting a very small picture of the resources that were out in Stafford County trying to remove the snow. Did we miss things during snow? Of course. We miss things all the time, but that's where we, we look for the citizens to provide us updates and calls and let us know we missed things, and we take that and try to act on it as soon as possible.
Concerning this pilot program you've got, I, I'm glad you explained it, but I quite frankly don't understand it because we've got so many areas in rural parts of the county that have no cellphone coverage. So, if you get up in Hartwood or Rock Hill District, and those places where there's no cellphone coverage, and a citizen goes online and says, "Oh, by the way, there are no snowplows in Hartwood or Rock Hill." Are you gonna continue that program, or is that...
Until the program can be fine-tuned as Wade, Northern Virginia does with their AVL locations, we're going to not put that public information out there anymore.
Good.
We're ceasing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bumpke.
Okay, but Mr. Nelson on, we're not gonna put that, because we just had this conversation upstairs a little bit, because I, I received a lot of those screenshots, as I'm sure other board members did too, but are you gonna put what's happening in Northern Virginia out on the VDOT plow site?
The VDOT plow site has always been active for Northern Virginia. They pretty much started the system. We've piggybacked to use a different alternative, which is the iPhones, which is not being utilized all over the state. So, until we can fine-tune that, I don't think that the information that is being relayed represents what we want to the citizens to see. So, until we can fine-tune that, I don't think we should move forward with it on the...
Okay, so we're not gonna put a disclaimer out there, you're just gonna remove the part for the Fredericksburg residency?
Yes.
Okay, but then, people are gonna say, "Well, well, where are we? How come we're not on the map? Why is Northern Virginia on there?" I think it would be good to say that Fredericksburg's in the middle of a pilot program, but our instrumentation or, you know, internet services aren't sufficient yet to give an accurate portrait of what's going on.
But until we have our entire fleet covered with these phones, I think we're gonna get more questions than anything from the system. So, it was not our intent to, to put this out there without putting a disclaimer out there that this is a pilot program, and it went out before that. So, at this point, I think the best way to, to resolve this is to wait until we have the full program initiated before we put anything else out there.
Is that all you had on snow removal? I did have, you said something very important, which was, the calls from the citizens are helpful. It's not like you have five or six people driving around saying, "Oh, we need to call somebody there." I mean, you, you don't have the eyes on the ground.
I do. Yeah, we have eyes on the ground.
Can you explain to us what that means?
Yes, we have monitors that are assigned to different areas throughout each area headquarters. Stafford County is broken into two different area headquarters. You have Southern Stafford, which is the Falmouth area headquarters, and the Northern area, which is the Stafford area headquarters. So, each monitor is assigned a zone, and that monitor is out riding the roads. And what I found out through this process with the big snowstorm, and the first snowstorm of the year, that some of these monitors may not be as familiar with the entire area. So, I've got some things that I'm gonna talk with my team about, about potentially using people that work at that area headquarters as the monitors, instead of having personnel that report to the district that serve in different capacities that don't know the roads as well. So, we had monitors out there that may not be familiar with the area, and of course, they will miss things.
Okay, that's good to know. Mr. Cavalier?
I just wanted to pass on that I had exactly zero complaints about snow removal, so kudos on, especially given the vast amount of snow that fell. I think you guys did a tremendous job.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Meldane.
And I can say that I had, one, worked through the issue until I found out it was in the Garrisonville District, so I had exactly zero also. Thank you. You did a great job, and for the big, we've had a few big ones in the last 10 years since I've been on the board, and just a few huge storms like this, and this is the best response or lack thereof that I've ever gotten.
Ms. Bumpke.
Yeah, I would just like to say kudos as well, because I worked with J.J. Foreman and with your office, and it was phenomenal. I did receive a lot of phone calls and emails, but you all took care of them immediately. The only constructive criticism, and I, I actually put a picture on Facebook, which I don't do a lot of Facebook, but it showed some kids sledding on my, on my front hill. And I didn't even think about it, but my street had been plowed two or three times with one of the smaller trucks, and somebody in my neighborhood said, "Hey, your street's been plowed." And I just assumed that they had already done our whole subdivision, and they had been up and down my road maybe five times, which I didn't care if they didn't come down my road at all. But how do you, and I heard that in other subdivisions as well, how can we make sure that they're doing swipes throughout the entire subdivision and not going up and down certain streets five or six times?
Initially, they try to focus on the main road in and out of the subdivision, is what they initially try to focus on. And the cul-de-sac sometimes present an issue, especially if there are vehicles parked there. So, if a snowplow driver drives down, and he sees a whole lot of vehicles parked in the cul-de-sac, and it's gonna be hard for him to maneuver around, he will keep on going.
Yeah, but in the case of like my street, I'm not on a major thoroughfare. I'm actually a cut-through road, well, I'm not a cut-through, I'm, I'm in the middle. In fact, they would have to drive down my street to know that I'm even there.
Well, if I can get your subdivision, we can talk offline.
Okay, that sounds great, Sean, but thank you for everything you guys did.
Okay.
Let's see, I think Ms. Sellers was next.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna thank you guys too. I did get some concerns, but I still think that you guys did a really great job in educating, at least in the Garrisonville District, a private road versus a VDOT road was, was a, an education curve maybe for myself too, and I had to get the list and figure out, you know, whose responsibility was that. Because I did find that VDOT was getting a bad reputation when it wasn't their responsibility, it was the HOA's responsibility. So, I have tried to help clear some of that up with our HOAs. But I also got word from Quantico that they really appreciate all your help and that things went really well there on Onville Road and...
Thank you for making that call to help us so we can turn around on the base too.
Yes, well, they, they really appreciate it, and I'm glad you guys got that worked out.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so, in my district, as you all know, we had a lot of difficulty with the snow plowing, and I appreciate you taking the time yesterday, and I'm certain that we'll meet once more, to talk about the different lessons learned that was, that was learned not only for me as a, as a freshman supervisor, but I think for my, my district as well with respect to snow plowing. Couple of, of things that I would like to recommend is, is at least for me, I would like to have that monitor's phone number, because especially if they don't know the district that well. For example, the ice storm that we had on the Wednesday before, there was a certain road had they gone up, and we had talked about this, but I just want to make sure that, that we get those numbers, because knowing the district a little bit better and also being on the front line of those telephone calls would make it easy for that communication to go back and forth, and, and so that would be my biggest recommendation. And then you and I will get together later to talk about the, the more minutia of the lessons learned that I learned throughout my district. But again, thank you. Thank you for meeting with me yesterday. I really appreciate the service that I've received from your organization.
Thanks.
Mr. Snellings?
I represent the largest district land-wise and probably the most rural, and I had a total of three complaints, so you did a great job.
Thanks.
One question keeps coming up. I know the answer to this, but I'd like you to take an opportunity just to give the VDOT answer. Sidewalks.
We don't clear them.
Thank you.
I think I'll wrap up the, the comments, at least on the snow portion. I had one or two emails there at the end, but it was literally within two hours of the snow stopping, and somebody wasn't sure why we weren't in their subdivision, so I didn't bother you with that. Overall, it was great. The very next day, probably within an hour of the snow stopping, I had to go to Spotsylvania, and I was like, "Uh-oh." And the roads literally were blacktop from the country road all the way over to Central Park, and I was, I was pretty amazed by that, given the fact that the snow had just stopped. So, I know the, the highway and the primary roads definitely, y'all did a great job on that, so, okay. The rest of your report?
All right. And just so everybody knows, you're not bugging me. If you, if you have an issue, let me know. So, I mean, that's where we get things handled. All right, so, I'll go over some of the construction projects. Route 17, reconstruction and widening project. The final paving and striping is scheduled to start this spring to wrap that project up. We made some enhancements at South Gateway to allow the little puppy tracks. We've done some interim work there. The contractor will be back later on, once he gets his schedule, to finish the rest of the striping. We tried to make some improvements in that intersection. The Route 16 and Onville Road intersection project, on January 11th, we had a partner dust meeting, which we held jointly with the county to talk about some of the things that were going on on 610. That project has actually started. The contractor right now is working on a stormwater management basin on the east side of Onville Road, and they've started installing some of the sanitary sewer on the west side of Onville Road. We've had some complaints about some of the mud that's being tracked across the roadway, but we're working with the contractor to make sure he cleans that, that up. Now, to go over some of the preliminary engineering thing, stuff, for the I-95 and 630 interchange, most of you heard the briefing today during the infrastructure committee, but I'll go over some of the dates. The statement of qualifications for the design builders is due today at 5 o'clock. The RFP will be released in spring of 2016. The project will be awarded in the fall of 2016 with hopefully completion of the interchange and the widening by summer of 2020. Actually, right now, you can see some of the reload, the utility relocations that are ongoing right now on 630. An update on the ferry road intersection improvements project, the right-of-way phase is scheduled to begin in summer of 2016, and that project should go to ad in 2017. Now, to go over some of the maintenance activities that we've got going on throughout the county, there's pothole patching going on now since we've had the big snow, so we're trying to get out and attack some of these potholes. We've got tree trimming at various locations, and we've got some of the 2016 paving routes that we'll be working on next spring and summer. Route 1 from Falmouth Road to Trusslow Road will be repaved. Route 1 from Falmouth Road to Trusslow Road will be repaved. Route 17 Business from Falmouth to Wyand Drive will be paved. We're going to be paving Route 218 from the Falmouth to the Bridge of CSX. So we finished the Falmouth project. Now we're trying to tie every end of it up with paving to make sure the whole area is serviced and has smooth pavement. We also will be paving Spring Lake Subdivision, Route 212, Carter Street, Gordon Street, Colonial Avenue, Washington Street. Bales Hill Road will be repaved next year. Arkendale Road will be paved and so will Brent Point Road. And that concludes my update. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
I have one question.
Ms. Sellers?
Onville Road, Garrisonville Road intersection. And I, I sent it to Anthony and Keith and they may have shared it with you, but a suggestion was made from Quantico or maybe a question was posed, would there be a way to put a sign up to say if that gate back there is open or shut or closed? And that would help some of the traffic on that road. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to discuss some sort of sign like that or how we do it, but.
And this is a sign that the, the base is actually requesting that they put up or?
I think, I think they are, well, at least exploring the option.
Okay.
Is kind of how it was posed to me. And other bases have those signs for the back gates to just let people know if it's open or closed, to keep people off the road if it is closed.
We can figure out what kind of sign they're looking at and we can discuss it and see if there's a way to facilitate it.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, I'll just mention this on behalf of Sheriff Decatur. He had mentioned to me at one point in time, going south on Route 1 by the Falmouth Bridge as your, and you can't go back, you can't go, come up anymore, as you know from Amy's Cafe, but you can go down. He had just mentioned to me at one point, he was surprised there wasn't a Chevron or a guard rail right there by the bridge, by the sidewalk. He said, you know, if a car ever went over, it would go down and basically hit the fish restaurant down below. If you could just take a look at that. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have presentations by the public. Anyone wishing to address the board will have an opportunity to do so. When you come to the podium, we ask that you state your name and address. You'll see a green light indicating three minutes, white light indicates one minute remaining, and red light means your time has expired. I do have one speaker card, Mr. Rob Holtzauer.
Good afternoon, thank you. I am from the Rock Hill District and my concerns.
Sir, can I get you to state your name and address?
Sure, I'm sorry. And the VDOT guy has left, I'm sorry. Okay, Rob Holtzauer, 16 Quarter Horse Court, Stafford, Virginia.
Thank you.
Okay, I live in the Rock Hill District and my concerns plowing in my community. While I'm sure it's one of the biggest storms we've had, I'm also aware the communications system that VDOT use and the routes that they plowed and the trucks in assignment, I like to bring attention to the way I see plowing was done. I, like many other members of our community, watched VDOT plow site during the recent storm, which noted where plowed trucks were and what areas were plowed. We just went over that. My neighborhood was not plowed until Tuesday afternoon. Other neighborhoods were plowed four or five times before then. Normally, I only saw one or two trucks in the whole Rock Hill District. I saw none at night. During the wee hours at night, I saw one down at Rock, or down at Walmart, which is eight miles from my house. I followed this website and I saw the trucks plowing street after street over and over and over again. Longwood Drive is a cut-through from Rock Hill to Garrisonville Road, two miles rural. Seven times that street was plowed within a 12-hour period. Seven times. Okay. I counted seven trucks on my street when it finally got plowed. It got plowed at noon. It got plowed at 2:00. It got plowed at 3:00. It got plowed at 4:00 when it was dry. I had a plowed truck on my street taking four inches of snow off the edge of my street, the driver leaning out the window while Apple Grove had yet to be plowed, which wasn't plowed until Wednesday. Vista Woods yet to be plowed. Thousands of people living in these neighborhoods and we're giving kudos to VDOT for the overall performance. And nobody is monitoring these guys and wondering why they're plowing the same street time and time again while the neighboring streets were unplowed. I went to the 7-Eleven after it was plowed, 2:00 in the afternoon, four plows sitting there idle, four of them. I got a phone call from a family member, four plows sitting on the end, end, end road, cul-de-sac, running, idling, midnight on Alderwood Drive. I have a lot of baseball contacts, a lot of fellow coaches and stuff. All snowed in until Wednesday afternoon, some till Thursday. I had to use time off, vacation day. And it's not the amount of snow or the amount of trucks that were in the area. To me, it wasn't managed as far as what they did after they did that particular street. They did a street and they went and did another green street and they did another green street. The green meant it was already done on the site. So my complaint was they were done over and over and over again while neighborhoods weren't touched.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody on my right wish to speak to the board?
I'm sorry.
Please come forward. You're good, sir.
I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way, also in the Rock Hill District. And I want to thank my new supervisor because we didn't have the wonderful experience you all did, okay? My house didn't get plowed first pass until 1:00 Tuesday. Okay, Tuesday. We had Lake Arrowhead, Windsor Forest, rural areas with huge lots being done three and four times. I had a surgical appointment I had to get to. I had to try to start digging myself out, 300 feet to try to get to the main drag. And Ms. Mauer was really good. She was good with my friends in Shelton Run. She was good with my, my friends over in Apple Grove. She checked in on us. When she was able to get out, she went out boots on the ground so she could see this just wasn't a perception problem of her residents complaining. This was actual, this street's getting done six times. This street hasn't been touched for three days. Now, I do have to say, as pleased as I was when they finally showed up at 1:00 on Tuesday, I was mystified because like this gentleman, only worse. I live in St. George's Estates. We have 430 homes. I have 52 homes on my street. After they did my first pass, they stayed in my neighborhood until 4:00 in the morning. 15 hours in St. George's Estates, I saw three or four different pieces of equipment up and down my street scraping dry. I have road that has come up on St. Williams that used to be down part of the street. It is now on the curb. I don't understand it. I mean, and this is probably why everybody didn't get done. They went out to these subdivisions and spent, you know, 12, 13, 14 hours while other ones didn't get done. It was a real overkill. So I can definitely understand what he's saying and I'm really glad she was out there. She was calling, have they come? Have they come? And I know that this is not your job, this is VDOT's job, but you guys are not without influence. A call from you guys or Mr. Romanello can get, get somebody on the phone to take a look at this. So very grateful. Thank you again and I hope it goes better next time.
Thank you. Anybody else from my right? Anybody from my left?
Well, good afternoon. My name is Holly Hazard and I live at 59 Harwell Drive and I'm honored to serve as the chairman for the Stafford County School Board and serve the Hartwood District. Superintendent Benson just provided you with an overview of where we want to take Stafford public schools in 2016 and beyond. And I'm excited to begin building and refining the superintendent's vision. However, I don't want you or the public to lose sight of the great things that are happening in Stafford County public schools right now. Sensationalized headlines designed to detract and diminish the efforts of our outstanding students and staff who live, work, and learn in this great community of Stafford need to be put in proper perspective. Let me tell you about our students. Stafford High School, just their first tech challenge team earned an invitation to the state competition after a second place finish in the regional competition during the snow event, I believe. Brookpoint High School placed first in the Academic Quiz Bowl last week as it has done the last two years. A Colonial Forge High School student was just selected as a candidate for the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars. North Stafford High School has had over 50 AP scholars. The Board of Education has awarded Mountain View Distinguished Achievement Awards. Our sports arenas, our music arenas, our kids are continuing to shine, both individually and as teams. Lots of our students are preparing for Model UN, Destination Imagination, Technology Association events, and the theater events. They always make us proud with our finishes. For Mr. Snellings and myself, Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries just posted a wonderful video about learning at Hartwood Elementary School. Let me tell you about our division and our staff. Stafford is the largest division in Virginia with all of our schools accredited. Our division is one of five recognized by the college for AP participation and number of students with qualifying scores. We are in the midst of redesigning our strategic plan for the division with community input and guidance. Over 100 educators are involved in our All Century Skills team, describing what successful students should look like in the future. State of art climate surveying has been done in our schools. 31 of our teachers have been named their own, their individual teacher of the year in their own schools. I could go on and on. Thank you for those who have visited classrooms with Dr. Benson. Learning in Stafford County is exciting. This why is this thus, that is why shocking headlines based on minimal or false facts anger me. Articles accusing us of lack of transparency, being tone deaf regarding the salary lapse and trying to stir up conflict between our boards over the issue need to appear on an opinion page. This is one issue that has been briefed to all parties and a comprehensive audit. All board members are accustomed to criticism and there are areas we can improve, but when the great and cutting-edge work is overshadowed by misleading headlines, it's important to set the record straight. Dr. Benson's budget is called securing our future. It is our future as Stafford County and I look forward to working with you during the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations on your chairmanship.
Thank you.
Anyone else from my left? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is committee reports by board members.
Mrs. Mauer?
Thank you. Couple of committees that we had over the last couple of weeks. First, I want to thank my fellow committee members on the Community and Economic Development Committee for electing me as chairman. I truly appreciate your support on that. We're very excited to report that we've now hit more than 41,000 jobs in Stafford County, which is an exciting number and it's continuing to grow as evidenced by the ribbon cutting that we attended today with Simvention's. They are adding 300 jobs to Stafford County and that's a testament to, to the work that our staff and our, my fellow supervisors are doing and encouraging businesses to come here. Secondly, I want to make you all aware that there are a couple of ordinance changes that will be coming before us soon. One is we're looking at changing some of the sign ordinances. We're changing some of the lighting ordinances and also some of the height requirements in order to conform with, with changing state code. Finally, I want to thank my fellow board members for the Brisbane Center. We had a great time. We missed you, Paul. Cooking, serving, the Brisbane Center. And I will tell you, that is, that is an amazing facility that we support and I look forward to, to doing that every year with my board members. Oh, one more final thing and that's on the legislative committee that I also sit with Ms. Sellers. We have a proffer bill that's coming before the General Assembly that will directly affect our ability here in Stafford County to, to help development pay for itself. It's one that, that I'm quite concerned about and I, I hope everybody gets on the phone with their delegates and their state senators because we, we help build our schools, our roads, our parks with proffers. And if that is significantly limited, as it appears it may be, it's going to be extremely challenging to meet the demands of growth here. So I want to make everybody aware of that. It's one that, that I've been following quite closely and staff has been working with our local delegation to, to help us with. So that's it.
Mr. Melde?
Thanks, and I'm glad you guys called up. I've done that a few times with my family's church, Spotswood Baptist, so thanks, Wendy. Election of Chairman took place at the Infrastructure Committee. I'm really happy that my other members elected me chairman. It's a great committee. We get a lot done. So I'll see if I can do right by you this year. But you heard a little bit about Exit 140. 2020 is now the expected opening date for our new interchange that was cut back down to $150 million. I hope they stick to that. It seems like forever. I'm not sure what we'll be doing in three and a half years, four years when it's finished. But hopefully it'll get done on this, this time, on the latest schedule. We put money, we allocated, you're going to have, you have something on the agenda later, we'll talk about it, but we recommended that we use transportation funds that were allocated, proffers for rezoning at Aberly next to the hospital for the transportation improvements here at the Courthouse Interchange. And you'll hear more about that. We went over the pump and haul, haul policy that we worked so hard over the last few years to try to finally stop and, and take care of the people that were depending on it and made some progress on some loans for them. And I think, I guess the most, I won't use the word interesting, but that would raise the most eyebrows would be the discussion on transport, the Transportation Authority that we could, really can't have here, the one that Northern Virginia has, Hampton Roads have. If we wanted to have an additional set of taxes, specifically a sales tax that would fund transportation, we don't even have the ability to do that without a lot of changes made to an existing bill or new legislation through the General Assembly. So in a nutshell, we'd have to get it enabled through our General, the General Assembly. So, and if you're going to do that, you could probably tailor it anyway, to any, any way you'd like. You could model it after the ones that exist or put your own spin on it. But I don't think, it's certainly not going to be an easy thing. It would have to go through the General Assembly. So that'll be the end of that conversation unless somebody, you know, or a group of us decide they want to pursue an additional tax for transportation. But I wouldn't be surprised if we heard more about it out of FAMPO or the Chamber of Commerce, who are the ones that, a member of FAMPO and Chamber of Commerce who have been talking about this a lot. And that was, those are the highlights. Thanks.
Ms. Sellers?
I'll defer at this time.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you. As has been mentioned, we attended ribbon cutting today for Simvention's, which is located in the Riverside Park down just off Route 17. Just a great company. I was very impressed with the CEO when he gave his little talk. He said, we not only hire the employee, we hire the entire family. And it really is a great organization and I know we're all very proud to have them here in Stafford. The homeless shelter cookout, well, cook-in Saturday night was really a good experience. But I want to get, pay special thanks to Donna Kraus because Donna's the one that bought all the food, told us what to do, and she is a taskmaster. I mean, if you got out of line with Donna, she lets you know it, but I really want to say kudos to Donna. She did a great job and got us through it. She said we'd be out at 6:45. We were out at 6:47. So she knew what she was doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Baumke?
Yes, as everybody's mentioned, we had a very exciting day today and we had a busy weekend. The ribbon cutting of Simvention's and as we know, this is a contractor that does defense work, intelligence, and also work in the area of national security. But I just wanted to point out, out of 5,000 companies in the nation last year, they ranked 2147 for fastest growing companies. And as they've already said, they're going to be reaching about 300 employees. And I, I've become familiar with this company when I was on the school board and I've just watched them be engaged in our STEM programs and STEAM and they'll just continue to be a great community partner. So it's very exciting. I also attended Jacob Wright's Eagle Scout Ceremony and another congratulations to Jacob and his family, his parents, Sarah and David Wright. I actually had this young boy in Sunday School when he was five years old. I actually had this young boy in Sunday School when he was five years old, so 13 years later, here he is as an Eagle Scout. But he built seven very sturdy benches over at our Civil War Park here in Stafford County, and apparently they've really been used by the older generation, which is great, so you can go out there and ponder what happened many years ago. But I also would like to point out, with this Boy Scout troop, it's Troop 516, and I'm sure Paul knows this, they started in September of 2005 at Andrew Chapel, and they have now, they started with five Boy Scouts, and they've now had 23 young boys meet the rank of Eagle Scout. So, that, that says a lot for that troop. Also, I wanted to mention that Laura Anthony and I attended the Empower House Annual Soup Bowl fundraiser, and as we know, this is one of our partner agencies, and I'd just like to say that the woman that stood up and gave this speech about what has happened in her life was just really heart-wrenching, and when we look at budget time, you know, what we give to some of our partner agencies, it really does give us a great return on our investment. We're changing lives there, for sure. And then I also just wanted to say, and then, and people on the board have already heard this, and I, it was in the newspaper as well, but we did have a very big horrific event, heroic event in the Falmouth District over the snowstorm when, and Anthony, are you going to bring this up?
Go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. We had a family that delivered a baby, and the 911 caller actually walked the father through the entire birthing of this young baby girl, and they had planned to have a midwife there, but obviously the midwife could not arrive on Saturday. And we also had to have VDOT come out, plow the roads to allow our emergency vehicles to get to the home and provide support to the family. But apparently, everybody's doing well, but that was just a great community partner, and our 911 caller was amazing. I, personally, I could not have done that. Anyway, just amazing. Also, I want to give a big shout-out to some people in, specifically J.J. Foreman, who was unbelievable during the storm. I emailed him, I called him, "J.J., we have an issue over here." You know, that sometime that day, he made things happen, and I thanked the people that reached out to me, whether emails or phone calls. I didn't have anybody that was really angry, but as I told them, "If you don't call me and let me know that there are issues in your neighborhood, I can't do anything about it, because in a situation like that, all you can see is your own street in front of you." So, and also, I wanted to say thank you to Joe Pittman, Lieutenant Joe Pittman, who lives over in Hickory Ridge. He shoveled seven driveways in his development before he left for work, and obviously, our park and rec employees did a tremendous amount during that time period. And lastly, I just wanted to say, I enjoyed cooking the meal the other night at the Thurman Brisbane Center as well, and I think the lesson learned is that we all have our strengths and weaknesses, whether it's in the kitchen or not, and some of us got a little bossy while we were doing the serving, but we can talk about that at our retreat this weekend, but actually, it was truly fun, so thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
Yeah, I had a few events this last weekend. Thankfully, they were scheduled for last weekend and not the weekend before during the blizzard, but namely, the, the Chamber of Commerce event last Friday night, which most attended. The, the homeless shelter event, that was a success. Also had a meeting with the Aquia Harbor Property Owners Association and their election of new officers. And then, last but not least, the Lions Club Reverse Raffle that I think Mr. Mulday and Ms. Mauer were also in attendance at. That's their biggest fundraiser of the year. So, that concludes my report.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Megan and I had a town hall that was planned, but we had to delay that because of the snow, so we have not forgotten, and we will reschedule that, and we will advertise a new date as soon as we can. I think the chamber, 100 years old, I think, is what we saw, so that, that's, that's a pretty big milestone. They kind of took us through what the chamber was 100 years ago, what the community was, and it kind of reminded me of the stories that Gary likes to tell all the time. Not that he was here 100 years ago, but I thought it was a great, great ceremony, great get-together. I did want to thank Donna, as Mr. Snellings did. She actually braved taking the vice chairman and myself shopping, and Gary's right, she's a taskmaster. She was getting a little upset that we were, I think, damaging some of the produce when we were throwing things into the cart, so she got us straight, and it was a, it was a really good event. Congratulations to our two new committee chairmen. Appreciate you guys stepping up to do that. One of the things over the blizzard is our social media pages this year were very active. It's becoming the new way to communicate with people, and there were some interesting statistics that I was giving. We had, you know, the county, the sheriff's office, fire and rescue, and parks and utilities, they all use their Facebook and Twitter sites to disseminate information, whether it was weather, closings, cancellations, emergency information, and sometimes road conditions. But during that time period from the storm, the Stafford County Government Facebook page had more, reached more than 192,000 people. That is more than double the amount of people we reach in a typical month. We reached almost 37,000 people with one of our posts, which is the largest post we've ever had about the fire and rescue, working with VDOT to reach and transport a patient who needed help. The government page alone gained 650 new followers before, during, and after the storm, which is great. To borrow a line from the 350th anniversary celebration, "We continue to use social media to tell our Stafford story," and we hope citizens will continue to engage us on the social media sites. And I wanted to spend a special thanks to Shannon Howell, and I know there's other people in the different departments, but they really did a good job reaching out and sharing information. A lot of times, people just want to know that you know information, and you, and you tell them what you can, so I appreciate that. And the last thing is, you know, we've, we thank staff and our leadership team for all the extra hours they put in, but I think sometimes we, we might forget all the families that were at home, kind of making everything work there without their loved one there to be with them the whole time, so I think the board wanted to extend a special thanks to all the family members here of Team Stafford and, and helping us get through the blizzard.
Okay, next we'll have report of the county attorney.
For any comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And report of the county administrator.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just two more minutes on snow. If you'll queue up the video, please. Thank you, Dr. Benson. That video was put together by Aaron Brooks in the treasurer's office, and we'll, we'll get that on the county's homepage, so folks can view that. Just a couple other items, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I, I think one of our great unsung heroes, he's sitting in the back there. The state code makes the county administrator the director of emergency management, but the coordinator of emergency management is the county fire and rescue chief, and Chief Lockhart is just awesome when it comes to everything he does, but in particular, when we have a natural disaster, and he frequently reminds me how many natural disasters we've had since I've become county administrator. But, Chief, you do an excellent job, so thank you to you, and as the chairman said, and Mr. Snellings said, thanks to, thanks to Kristen and your family, too, for letting us have you through the long weekend. Did want to mention that during the storm, we did have one, two building collapses in the county, one awning up in North Stafford, just off of Route 1 and the gas station. We were very fortunate in both, there were no injuries. The other one was a little bit more serious in that it has resulted in some businesses that have been shut down on Plantation Drive, the shopping center at Plantation Drive and Warrenton Road. I'm pleased to say that with some work that was done immediately after, after the storm by a contractor, and with inspections done ever since then, including both Saturday and Sunday by the building official and the fire marshal who were out there personally, nine of the businesses have reopened, and we're doing everything we can to get the entire shopping center reopen just as soon as possible. The declaration of local emergency began at 8 o'clock on January the 22nd, went through 8:00 a.m. January 25th. We'll ask the board on your consent agenda to ratify that. That was alongside of the declaration that Governor McAuliffe did. According to our current emergency closing policy, essential employees who work during county closures receive additional compensation in the form of premium pay or compensatory time, which is calculated at one-half of the employee's hourly rate of pay. Because the bulk of the storm occurred over the weekend, and the county has closed during the weekend, even though there were 275 people working, we had, the county offices were closed, the folks who worked during that storm won't be eligible for this additional pay. They would have been eligible for it had the storm hit on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, on a weekday. This would include approximately 240 of the 275 folks who worked who would be eligible for this, and so I am asking the board to consider a motion today that would extend the current county policy to cover January 23rd and January 24th, 2016, so those deserving employees will be recognized for their dedication and hard work. Going forward, we are going to ask a committee to take a look at the policy and perhaps bring back a long-term recommendation, and with that, I would ask the board to please consider that.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Can we have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes. Towel the vote. That motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that. And Mr. Chairman, one, Agenda Addition, which is item number 13 from Mr. Snellings, which would approve the appointments of Ms. Sue Henderson and Ms. Elizabeth Davis to the Armed Services Memorial Commission, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have a motion for the agenda with that addition?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Can we have a second by Ms. Mauer? Please cast your votes. Towel the votes. That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have Consent Agenda. Do any members wish to pull an item from Consent? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your vote. Towel the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is New Business, number 11, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. Presentation of Embry Mill signage proposal of criteria for selection of athletes featured at the Jeff Ross Swim and Sports Center display case.
We had, if you look in your background package, there's some pretty good visuals, but we're basically being asked to bless the approach that staff's taking, and when we discussed this earlier in the week, we still don't have all the visuals for things like the, the signage in, in the swimming pool area, and exactly what that case is going to look like. So, in, in working with staff, we don't want to lose momentum, because it's going to take a while to get this stuff contracted, and we want to have it there when we do the ribbon-cutting. So, I had previously reached out to Mr. Snellings and Mrs. Baumke about, over the next two weeks, a small subcommittee working with staff. That way, at the very next meeting, hopefully you two can bring a recommendation to the board, and we can hopefully take action at the next meeting. And at that point, we won't consider it New Business, so it will be ready for action. That work?
Okay, thank you for doing that. Okay, number 12 is Public Works authorized application of Aberley proffer funds to the Route 1 Courthouse Road Intersection Improvement Project in the Aquia and Hartwood District.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as Mr. Mulday mentioned, this was discussed earlier today at the Infrastructure Committee. They did send it forward to the board with a recommendation for approval. As, as the board is aware, the Aberley rezoning was approved last year. That project is underway with a site plan recently approved by the county and building permits currently being worked upstairs through the building officials' office. As the board is aware, the board has approved infrastructure and capacity expansion improvements at Brookpoint High School. The addition of 200 seats, as well as some other improvements, are underway at the school, and will be open by the next school year, or be finished by the next school year. In addition, the board approved additional funding for the improvement of the library or the media center there at Brookpoint High School, which is really a model library for our other high schools here in the county. At the time of the rezoning, which was in August of last year, there was a proffer statement under the transportation category that said the applicant make a monetary contribution to the board in the amount of $6,499 per multifamily unit constructed on the property to be used for transportation purposes. The proffer also stated that said contribution shall be paid after the final inspection and before occupancy permits are issued, and it allows for the allocation of the transportation proffers towards student capacity improvements at Brookpoint High School should the, should the board desire. The Brookpoint High School project was on a fast track to help deal with the growth issues, and so the board advanced that project last year, and as I mentioned, that's moving forward. There are 288 units that are permitted at 6,499 units. That would be $1,871,000. We are asking that these transportation proffers be allocated to the Route 1 Courthouse Road project. This is a project that is likely to receive HB2, which is VDOT funding. We also briefed the Infrastructure Committee on that. There is a local component to the funding, to the, to receive the state, state funding, and this would go toward that. And so, the resolution in your board package would dedicate these funds to the Route 1 Courthouse Road Intersection. That's R. 16-53, and we recommend approval.
Do we have any questions? Okay, do we have a motion for R. 16-53?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mulday, seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your votes. Towel the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13, county administration approved the appointments of Ms. Sue Henderson and Ms. Elizabeth Davis to the Armed Services Memorial Commission.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, and seconded by Ms. Baumke. Please cast your votes. Towel the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Mauer, would you like to offer a motion?
Okay. Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board, and, two, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your votes. Towel the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Board will now adjourn into closed meeting. Do we have a motion to certify the closed meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Mauer, seconded by Ms. Sellers. Please cast your votes. Towel the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Having no other business for the board, this meeting is adjourned.